Benton County Board of Commissioners meeting to order, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I'm glad to see we have a full crowd here today. Roll call, note that Commissioner Pop is gone.
Sure.
Excused.
Sounds good.
Everybody else is here, thank you.
Perfect.
The agenda mover approve the agenda, Monty?
So, Mr. Chair, you have two items in front of you to add to your agenda. If we could please add both of them under Administrator at nine ten as the third and fourth items. First is engagement with Finley Engineering for provider negotiations. The second would be the Green Light Resolution supporting veterans as the fourth item.
Number three.
I guess I'd also leave it up to you, Mr. Chair, is if you wish to go ahead and remove the highway access policy matter or table it when you get there. In speaking with Commissioner Pop, he mentioned that the applicant is not available here today. So, you could certainly table it then or just remove it now.
Table it later.
We'll table it as when we get to that agenda item.
And those are the changes that we have.
Board members?
Move to approve?
Second.
Get a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. County board meetings are broadcasted live and video recorded on YouTube. Get my glasses on here. Please refrain from speaking from the audience area and come to the podium so that the viewers can hear you. County Board observes Roberts Rules of Order for its meetings, so please obtain the board's chair's consent before adjusting the county board. Public comments are generally reserved for the open forum segment or public hearings. However, public comment on other agenda items may be allotted to discretion of the board chair. As we begin today, please turn off all cell phones or turn your cell phones on vibrate. Thank you. Open forum, anybody out there? I see none. Saving you the walk, Beth.
Thanks.
Consent agenda, one, two, three, what we would, what would we like to do with these?
Chair, I'll move approval of consent agenda items one through three. Second.
We got a motion and a second on the agenda item. Any questions? If not, I'll call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Next on the agenda, Roxanne, Land Services Director, consider the reassignment of IUP 17-566 from Eisenshanks to Benton County for mining operations.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Morning.
So normally this is not something that would come before the board, but the reason is that the county is the one who owns the gravel pit. And so, when we have either a new subcontractor or a new owner of a gravel pit, we need to reassign that interim use permit to the new owner or the new subcontractor. And so, this is just acknowledging that the county is taking over that gravel pit and that they are now subject to all of the development conditions. And so, as you'll see, within the agenda packet item here, there is the acknowledgement form that the county is agreeing to or acknowledging the development conditions and signing off on those. So again, this is not something that would normally come to the board, but because it's a county-owned pit, that's, that's why it's before you today. And then it will go before the Planning Commission on November tenth.
So it's just cleanup work then, in a sense?
Yep.
Any questions for Roxanne at this time?
Mr. Chair, I'll move approval of reassignment of this pit to the county and authorize the chair to sign.
A second?
Okay, we got a motion and second, any further discussion on this item? If not, I'll call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, thank you Roxanne.
Thank you.
Next, Monty, appointed interim county engineer, public works director.
So with the departure of our county engineer, Chris Burdoz, on Friday, it's, the board should appoint someone in an interim role. Of course, this was discussed quite extensively at the recent committee of the whole. So, recommendation, Mr. Chair, is to appoint our assistant county engineer, Mark Lloydalt, as our interim county engineer for a period of time to be determined by the board, also at a salary as determined by the board. You'll see in the agenda item, the salary amount requested by Mark, grade twenty, step four. So, again, if you're inclined to make that appointment, got a couple of blanks in the motion to fill in, that would be again, a duration in a salary.
Thank you, Monty. I do believe in promoting within. We've had lengthy discussion about this at the COW. And it's all about giving him all the resources we can to make him successful on this.
Mr. Chair, Monty, do you have any recommendation as far as a timeline?
And, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Johnson, I would say somewhere between four and six months. Somewhere, probably not more than, not more, not less, so somewhere in that range.
Okay.
And even at that time, we can appoint him?
That is true, of course, at any moment during that period of time, you could go ahead and move ahead with a permanent appointment. That's really at the board's discretion, yes.
And, Mr. Chair, if I could, Monty, could you also remind us what the, once we get to an appointment position, what that entails, what that means, I believe it's a four-year appointment?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Johnson, is that for, for an individual, and that's their, their initial, their first-time appointment, you can appoint them for a period of one year, but you could also appoint them for a period of four years. You would have that discretion for the initial appointment.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I just want to make sure we're conscious with all the work that has to go on over there and that if, if this is going to become evident that we're going to promote for a full-time, then we should do that, you know, when, when we come to that conclusion, just for the fact that we're going to have to hire somebody for the, for the assistant. There's a lot of work that has to happen there.
Yep. I totally agree with that.
With that, I'll make a motion to appoint Assistant County Engineer Mark Lloydalt as interim Benton County engineer for a period of not more than, or not less than four months, but not more than six months with a wage rate of step twenty, or grade twenty, step four.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, any further discussion on this item? If not, I'll call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Mark, you're the new intern. Next, approve agreement for space needs assessment, Monty?
Okay. The board recently made the choice to select GLT Architects from Saint Cloud as your firm to assist it with exploring the possibility of a governmental center and also renovations of existing county buildings. This agreement was drafted by our assistant county attorney and has been accepted by the firm, GLT. And I think that's really all I want to mention. It, one thing that's a little different about this contract is it, it doesn't have sort of a maximum not to exceed. I think the board based its decision on GLT's experience, their credentials, their hourly rates and so on and so forth, knowing that this project isn't necessarily super well-defined in terms of its duration. So it was really tough for a vendor to say, okay, well, it's going to take us fifty hours in a maximum amount. So again, I think, as I described earlier, it's an exploration and that may take some time, so.
Thank you for that.
Yep.
Thank you for that.
Mm-hmm. So before you is the agreement with GLT.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to move to approve an agreement for space needs assessment and conceptual design services with GLT Architects.
Second. We got a motion and a second, any further discussion on this item?
Mr. Chair, I want this to get going as soon as possible. I mean, we, we hear from everybody about our space needs and they just keep evolving. We need to get, get this rolling.
I agree.
I agree too. Okay, we got a motion and a second, any further discussion on this item? If not, I'll call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, Monty?
I'll add one more thing is, I'll be speaking with Evan Larson Friday about getting things going, schedule kickoff and so on, but yeah, I'll have a conversation with Evan Friday.
Great, thank you. Next item.
Is the.
Consider engagement?
Finley Engineering. The background here is, and I'll defer, of course, Commissioner Kapinski, is, is looking to Finley for assistance as we potentially would negotiate an agreement with the provider regarding the fully Saint Cloud fiber. I would imagine that's going to be a fairly complex agreement. And it's good to have a firm like Finley in your corner. So I think that is the basis for the agreement. I'll turn it right over to Commissioner Kapinski, Mr. Johnson, if you wish to add more to this.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I think we engaged Finley for the broadband study for getting all that stuff put together and helping us along that road. But we also have a fully Saint Cloud fiber route that is going to be complex with potential providers getting on board and actually being the one that is the operator of that fiber. We don't want to be our own telco. So, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Monty, this is more of a not to exceed number?
Well, I believe, as Chris described it to us, they, this would be what they call that time and expense base. In other words, it would be hour, an hourly rate.
Yep.
So I think he, he wasn't able to sort of tell us, okay, I could do this for you in X number of hours. It's, it was based upon their hourly rate, which are an attachment fee. So I think to some extent, we can control that.
Correct.
And.
That's where I was going.
How many times we call them, we bring them into meetings, things, so that's kind of somewhat on us to control.
Yep.
Their cost.
Mr. Chair, too, if I could expand on that a little bit with Commissioner Kapinski, I think the intent was that this committee would still do some of the quote-unquote negotiating with, with the providers, that time commitment, but we really needed somebody professionally that could put together what that result is.
Yep, correct.
Okay. In this, in our packet here, it says the operation number and everything and then not to exceed ten thousand? So do we need clarification on that?
No, that's what we're telling me.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
Okay, that's what you were talking about, that it will not exceed ten, ten thousand?
Yeah, I don't, I don't foresee, I mean, they did that whole study and it was, I mean, no, I don't see that being, going over that.
Like Monty said, we can control a lot of that.
Yep, I just wanted clarification on that, that's all.
I'll make a motion to approve the Finley Engineering engagement.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, any further discussion on that item? If not, I'll call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Next item, consider resolution supporting operation Green Light for veterans.
So, Mr. Chair, as you heard at the recent AMC District Five meeting, the National Association of Counties and AMC are urging its member counties to recognize veterans as Veterans Day approaches by adopting this resolution. And one of the, one of the things they also recommend is you illuminate a building in green light to sort of acknowledge veterans and draw attention to the need for service to our veterans. So the resolution that's in your packet was provided to us by AMC, I believe it actually originated with NACO. And of course, we've, we've metted a fight with Benton County. And just as a little sidebar is that we've made arrangements to acquire a floodlight to illuminate the front of the, the building here at modest expense. So that's our, our measure of support, so. So I ask you your approval of the resolution.
Well, I'm glad you got the floodlight, Monty.
Well, give credit to Mr. Dingman's savvy shopping abilities.
Mr. Chair, I will move to approve the resolution supporting Operation Green Light.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, any further discussion on this item? Not, I'll call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, thank you, Monty. Next up, Mark Abnett, Highway Department, consider the sale of unused buildings on county-owned Eisenshank pit.
I think we should be good. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As you're aware of, we have buildings on our resource for gravel. And I'm asking you guys today if you could possibly pass a resolution to have those buildings removed. Be the house, the old barn, and then a lean on the barn would be the three items to go. The main pole shed that's like forty by eighty or whatever would stay there for now. We'd use that as storage.
And this will be through a bid process, a sealed bid process?
It is through, oh, Monty left me here for a minute. There's a state statute that we have to go by, that we have to post it through our public paper and the internet and all that stuff. So we're looking at possibly, Monty, three weeks of posting this, maybe longer.
Yeah, Michelle's recommendation was three weeks. And I'm sorry, I missed it, I, my suggestion, Mr. Mark, was we would use the public service website. The neat thing about that is, it's kind of like eBay, where so people see what the other bid is. And we've had really great success selling vehicles through that and getting really good prices. And in sealed bid, you're kind of guessing what the, what the high bid is. But with public surplus, you see, and you may remember in the AMC District meeting, they mentioned public surplus. We've been using it for a while to sell cars and it's worked really well. So that was my recommendation is to use that website.
Also worked real well for our crack filler.
Yes, it did.
Worked really well.
So, yeah, I have it out there for about three weeks. I think the board just needs to set some minimum prices on those three structures today.
Do we know what those minimum might be?
You have some recommendations, Mark?
Um, my recommendation is, is I'd like to see twenty thousand out of that house, but I did have an auctioneer come out, John Carlson, and he said, easy ten thousand, but high side would be twenty thousand. And then on the barn part of it, if you got a thousand bucks, and the only thing we're looking at the barn is if there'd be somebody interested in the siding offer or the lumber offer for whatever purposes, it seems to be pretty popular. And the other shed is basically, it's a very good structure, just needs to be tore down and relocated. And that's, I'd probably say five thousand, maybe.
So do you think we're starting too high at twenty thousand for the house, if that's what?
I'm, I'm just saying that's the high side, probably the low side would be ten. I don't know what it would cost to move that house, but I would say let's start between the ten and twenty. And the sooner we can probably, the sooner we could get rid of it, the better. But it is a very structured, sound house. Even Mr. Carlson said too that, I think it was built in nineteen eighty.
Mr. Chair, Mark, the shed that you're keeping, does that have electric to it?
It does. Actually, I looked at that, what's going to be kind of convenient is, is whoever purchases the house at that time, all we have to do is have XL Energy come out and snip the wires off the main power line above. That'll disconnect the house and the shed should still be activated.
And that's Excel or East Central?
Maybe it is East Central.
Okay.
Yes, it is East Central.
Monty, do you have any recommendations of starting the process out for the house? Being the low numbers at ten and the highs at twenty?
Well, I think, again, the, what we would seek from you all is setting just the minimum today.
Correct.
Right, so it sounds like Mark is saying perhaps the minimum is ten on the house?
Correct.
Five on the, on the.
The shed?
The steel and then a thousand on the barn?
I'll make that motion, putting those minimums on the building, ten on the house, one on the barn, and five on the shed.
Second.
Okay, so clarification, one is one thousand and five is five hundred?
Correct, no. Five, five is five thousand, too.
On this, the steel, described as a steel outbuilding is five thousand, barn building one thousand.
The house, ten thousand.
Ten thousand.
Thank you, I just wanted clarification.
Uh, Mr. Chair, before.
Do we have a second on that one?
A second.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed that. We got a motion and a second, discussion?
Yep, thank you. Mark, what's the plan for once the numbers come in? I mean, timelines and that type of thing?
I guess on the house, we should set some kind of a timeframe. I would say, you know, through winter months, the barn probably could be tore down, stuff like that. I would say we should have everything probably out of there by May.
So, okay.
And the house, whoever purchases that at the time, I think it'd be, once they sign the agreement, pay for it, the power gets cut, they're up to winterizing it and making sure nothing freezes and then it's on their discretion how they want to take care of it. And then we're going to cut the heat.
Okay, so I got a question about that. So don't you think we should be winterizing that house right now?
Actually, the heat's on right now, it's set at fifty. Yep, yep, I'm watching that every day or during the week as far as making sure there's forty percent in the LP tank right now. So I'm guessing we're going to probably have to add a little bit of LP to it just to kind of get through this phase here. But no, I've been watching that so it does not freeze or any damage. Because we do have, this house is actually going to be coming with a full refrigerator, microwave, electric stove, dishwasher, washer and dryer. It's fully equipped, the water softener downstairs, the bladder tank, that's all brand-new. That, it's fully equipped, so.
I have a question.
Commissioner Schlangen?
The third whereas says that the selling of the property should, for not less than ninety percent of its appraised market value as determined by the county, do we have to go by that? I'm sure it's appraised at more than ten thousand.
See, I'm kind of confused, I think that's more for the land value than the buildings.
The way I understand that statute works, Commissioner Schlangen, is if you're unable to sell it on your own and you, and it doesn't work, you don't get it sold, and you turn it over to a broker, then that stipulation applies.
Okay, so we're saying go to the broker?
We're going to try and sell it ourselves first, right?
Do it ourselves.
Okay.
So my hunch is probably a pretty good luck selling on.
Oh, yeah.
So that provision won't then apply.
My question is, is do we assume the liability and winterize it right away and be done with it? I'm just throwing it out there, Commissioners.
I'm thinking.
I know you are. You know, I, I hate, personally, I don't want to spend any more money than what we have to for the LP and everything. So if we're going to heat this for another two months, we're going to be adding LP, okay? And we're going to add an additional expense. At that point in time, should we be proactive and go ahead and just winterize it and be done with it?
We can, if the board is at their wishes, we can do that.
Up for discussion.
Good chair.
My, my concern on that would be you shut everything down and people come through and do a, a look at the house, everything. It'd be nice to have everything working. And I, how big of a tank is that?
The bladder tank?
No, the, the.
Oh, it's a five hundred, five hundred pound LP tank.
You still got a couple hundred gallons in there.
I, I, I'm going to say we should be good through the month of November anyway on that. Even at forty percent, because we got the rest of the, well, it's the weather forecast, the way it's looking, it's supposed to be pretty decent for the next two weeks, so.
Sure.
That's going to pull us through at least half a month of November. And if we can get this thing, you know, listed right away.
Commissioner Schlangen?
Yes, I'd like to go at least a couple of months, because once you close it down, the house deteriorates that much faster too when it's cold.
Actually, it doesn't. I've been in the construction world too long to understand that. Commissioner Johnson, thoughts?
Commissioner Kapinski, with your motion, I'm wondering if it would make sense to amend, putting some dates on there and, and maybe such a thing as we keep it heated till December first and after that it gets winterized, something to that effect?
I'd be fine with that, I would amend my motion to December first, because I think we'd have enough. I, I agree, we don't want to be putting more propane in.
No.
To heat something that's going to be going down the road, so. I, I would amend to December first and then we winterize.
Removal of the house by December first?
No.
No, winterize, but that gives, that gives everybody, if we can get it listed now, that gives people the opportunity to get in there and go look and.
And, Mr. Chair, just to verify, Mark, so if we had, if we were to amend a motion that would say all of these pieces are removed by May first, would be reasonable? Or do you?
I would, I would, it, I would prefer if we gave them till at least May.
Yeah, May first.
Yeah, May first, that'd be fair, yes.
All buildings, including the house, removed by May first?
Yep, yep, if not, we're just going to demolish them and get rid of them if they don't sell. I mean, basically like the barn, if it doesn't sell, then it's just going to.
I will amend my motion for, okay, ten thousand minimum on the house, one thousand minimum on the barn, and five thousand minimum on the shed with the house being heated till December first and then winterized. And then everything has to be removed or, or after May first will be demolished.
Yep, and I'll amend my second to match that.
Okay, Monty, you look kind of puzzled, do you have any questions or concerns on this?
Yeah, I think it's just important that, you know, when we post those on the website, those conditions are made extremely clear.
Yep.
That it's got to be removed by May first, in other words, that's a condition of the sale.
Right.
Is that you have to, you're agreeing that you're going to remove it by May first. So that's something you definitely want to make sure that's posted really clear on the website.
Then I'd like to add too, that there's going to be a timeframe that they, that people can come out and look at this, not that we're scheduling every hour of the day and week that we're going to be running out there. I just want to do like a two or three-day window that inspection dates and that's it, yep.
And then that'll be going through you then to go and see?
Yeah, I would, I would do the inspection, yep. Do the work.
With the people that on-site that will look at it?
Correct, yep, yep.
Okay.
And I think we're okay just letting them set their own dates on that.
Yep, yep. Okay, any more discussion on this item? If not, I'll call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Mark, appreciate that. Next, I will turn it over to the Human Services Board Chair, Commissioner Johnson.
We strung that out long enough just to be able to meet our timeline here, so.
I intentionally did that.
We'll call our Human Services Board to order, Bob, any changes or to our agenda?
No.
Is there a motion?
So motion, second.
Motion, second, to approve our agenda as presented, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's carried, our consent agenda, looks like there's two items here.
Move to approve?
Second.
Okay, motion, second, to approve our consent agenda items, one and two, any further discussion? Hearing that, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that's carried, any other updates, Bob, anything else?
I have nothing else.
Hey, thank you.
Questions?
Thank you again for the COW yesterday, appreciate all the information.
Our pleasure, it was very good information yesterday.
Okay, with that, Mr. Chair, we'll adjourn the Human Services Board and we'll turn that back over to the regular meeting.
Thanks, Bob.
We'll reconvene our regular board meeting. Next up, Mark Loyd, Assistant County Engineer, appeal to county's highway access policy.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm just going to try to find the Z drive here.
I just want to note for the record that I did speak, of course, with Commissioner Pop this morning and he suggested table in the. I just wanna note for the record that, uh, I did speak, of course, with Commissioner Pop this morning, and he suggested tableing the item. But I'm not sure if that was on the premise that the applicant would not be able to attend, so I just wanna make sure I mention that, so.
Yes, we did see the applicant online. So do we wanna go through the presentation, or do you want to table it? What does the board's discretion?
Maybe we should ask the applicant.
Okay, go ahead, Mark.
Mark, could you do me a favor, just bring back, and then we'll ask Mister-
Danaries, yeah, Mister Flipson, are you on? Uh, would you, did you hear the Commissioners?
Yes, I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, did you hear that, uh, there was a, uh, Commissioner Pop wanted to table this until he could be here in person? Is that alright, or do you want us to?
Well, we could discuss it if we'd like. I mean, I'm, I wanna get this moving forward, so if we wanna discuss it, I'd be the guy. I know Ed's not available, but if that helps, if like-
Well, it's pretty important because you're in his district.
Mister Chair, if I could, Dan, just to clarify, I, I, are we, uh, causing an issue if we were to table this for you? I, I, personally, I'd like to see Mister Pop here.
Um, no, the only thing would be weather permitting, but let's table this until Ed is there, being that this is-
Okay. Mister Chair, I'm gonna move to table this item, uh, to our next county board meeting, which I believe is November fifteenth.
Yep, I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to table this to our next board meeting for November, November fifteenth. Any more discussion on this?
Mister Chair, I just wanna make sure Mister Flipson understands, but I, I think it's important that Ed is here and, and no due respect to you, I, I see you're on, so. Uh, I think it, I think it's good to have your Commissioner present.
And, and I totally agree with that too.
Thank you, Dan, appreciate it.
Thank you.
With that, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Dan. Hopefully, see you the fifteenth. Thanks, Mark, sorry.
That's all right, and thanks for the appointment.
Do you have any updates or anything you wanna talk about, being you've only been a intern for a day and a half?
Wouldn't it be technically, uh, fifteen minutes?
Technically.
Well, technically, you're right.
You did introduce him as the, uh, assistant.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
I didn't mean we take, uh, the pay changes for those fifteen minutes. No, thank you very much. I'm very honored that you're considering me or appointing me for the intern, so, thank you. But otherwise, I, I don't think any other updates at this time, so.
Well, that's good to hear. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Good luck. Okay, with that, next, Commissioner Meeting Updates. Commissioner Schlangen.
Okay, um, was at the ICAP meeting, and they are looking at, they said their payroll is going to be about four hundred and sixty thousand higher than last year with eleven percent increase. But they're able to have their total budget increased two hundred thousand. They assisted a hundred and seventy-five first-time homeowners, a hundred and eighteen small businesses, and assisted with getting four vehicles for people. Maybe the best of the meaning is that. Um, otherwise, I've just been to the policy of everybody's, I do go online for, uh, ethics with the MCI two, um, training for about an hour and a half. And otherwise, it was just the cows. And I, um, the meeting with the, um, transportation about transits, what, there was some mix-up with registrations and stuff. So, and I, we were really busy that week with cows and everything, and it, and afterwards, I noticed, um, the approval was in my junk mail. And Beth had not been notified, but we were able to get the money refunded for that, so.
Great.
Okay, good, thank you. Next.
All right, um, I did have a, I started my NACO broadband. That is interesting. That was, uh, that, yeah. Well, it's not just broadband, it's all technology, so there's a, there's definitely, it was eye-opening, and I just sat and listened this time.
I think we have the right person on that committee.
Yeah, well, I'll tell you, it's-
For sure.
Careful what you wish for is what I come out of that one with, but, uh, no, great, great meeting, and, uh, Commissioner, uh, Clark from Sterns did a very good job. She, she's the chair of that, so. Uh, we had our Langola, um, meeting in Rice, that one, the township, that went very well. Um, touching tables, I think they had a great turnout. Um, so, we were there, uh, we had our District Five at Meeker, um, obviously, we were all there as well, that, there was some good stuff that came out of that one. Um, other than that, I think that's really about it. We've had, uh, the, the Sacrapus Government Center, the, um, Corridor, Mayhew Lake, um, open house there, so, uh, there was actually more people there that attended than I thought was gonna be. So, uh, some good stuff come out of that as well. Uh, then BEP at the Clearing, um, that was the electric vehicles, as we all seen, was, was interesting, and there was a lot of, uh, questions. Uh, first time I've ever seen their timeframe, they almost had to be cut off because of the questions and the, and the going back and forth and talking about things. So it was, it was very, uh, I, I thought it was a great presentation. That's all I got.
Lot of questions about too many people that drive trucks and trailers.
Yep.
All right, October eighteenth, we had the Northland Reliability Project update. I know Commissioner Heinen was there, I believe Commissioner Schlangen was there too. Uh, regards to the trans- uh, transport line for, um, electricity coming down potentially, uh, through the county area and, and head and south, so that was, that was good information. Sounds like they're at the very beginning of that, so. Um, Commissioner Kapinski talked about Langola Township again, uh, kudos to him and Amanda, she presented again for us at our township meetings, and we had very, very good response to that. Um, I had BEP written down too. Of course, Commissioner Kapinski's taken away some of my stuff here. Uh, touch, back to the touching tables, if I recall correctly, Connie mentioned that they raised seventeen thousand dollars this year, which was the most they've ever raised, so, that was good.
Wasn't there a match too by Murphy and-
Shev and, uh, who was the second?
Oh, I shouldn't have brought that up here. Yeah, yeah.
I think it was the bank.
Yeah.
Falcon.
Falcon.
Wasn't, I don't believe it was Falcon.
No, it was a different bank though, I believe.
I think you're right, though. Um, and I had a Region Seven W Transportation meeting last Friday, uh, really were no action items, a, a lot of updates in what potential dollars are coming, and so there hasn't been a great movement on, on action on those areas, so. Um, kinda doubled up on, uh, what Commissioner Kapinski said about our cows too, so that's all I had.
So I attended all the other meetings that everyone talked about. Uh, the, the only other thing is that on the Mayhew Lake Open House, we did have a lot of people there, a lot of good discussion uh, about that, so that was, was really good to see. Other than that, I attended all the other meetings, just like everybody else did with the cow, so.
Mister Chair?
Yes.
One other comment, I, I know you and I briefly talked about this, but Commissioner Persky reached out to me about the, um, um, twenty-three corridor deal. And, and I think you had brought up that potentially, I just wanna make sure we get back to, to Commissioner Persky to-
And actually, and Commissioner Heinen and I talked about that too, and I went back and looked at our committee assignments, and actually, you and I are both on the Highway Twenty-three Coalition assignment already, so should be taken care of technically.
Yeah, this, this conversation started in DC because I sat in with Commissioner, uh-
On the twenty-three.
On the twenty-three corridor, and, and I told him it'd be best suited to have the, uh, Commissioner in his district beyond that.
I think some of the bigger concern is there's not a lot of, uh, presentation right now from seven E and going east. We need to pull in Malax and Kanabik and Sandy and those counties to get on board with this coalition.
And I believe they wanna set up a seven E.
Yes, that's, yep.
Great. Anything else? Okay. Commissioner, comments, Commissioners? Okay, if not, set committee of the whole meetings.
What?
Oh.
You don't have any?
We have nothing new.
Oh, thank you.
I can come up with something, no?
Oh, that's a first. Wow.
Hopefully, our next meeting, you'll have something for GLT that we can put on.
Yeah, you'll have two things. Uh, we need to set a final budget committee of whole to discuss budget, like official salaries and fee schedule changes, that usually happens in early December, so at your next meeting, we'll set that one.
Okay, great.
Motion to adjourn, Mister Chair?
Second.
Got a motion, a second to adjourn. Any further discussion? If not, we're adjourned, nine thirty-seven.
That has to be the fastest-
And we will take a couple minute break before we start our ditch.
I, I had forgot about it too, and I just pulled the committee assignment out, and it's there. Used to get some when they were doing some work down south, but it's almost like I dropped off it or something.
So are we both on it or one and alternate?
There's two of us on it.
I'll get what, uh, Joe will be happy with that.
There we go.
Pop's the alternate.
Okay.
It's all there? I didn't touch it out last night, while I brought it here.
That was good timing. Oh, man.
Can we start this meeting early?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
Cause there's no set timeframe on it. It's just a matter if we need any more breaks.
Well, we're fifteen minutes early.
I got a lot of stuff I gotta do today, so I am more than happy to get out of here early. Already heading.
But you gotta go to, uh, Minneapolis first? And that's all.
Okay, this is my question. Is everybody ready? You guys ready? Okay, we will now call the Benton County Ditch Authority Meeting to order. Uh, approve or amend the meeting minutes of October eighth?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion on that? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. Three, discussion about drainage authority policy on tree clearing as part of a ditch repair project. One question I have for you, Mark, do we have, do you have those pictures of what Mister Berg took when we were out there meeting?
Um, no, I don't. I guess I'm not aware of those.
Okay. Continue.
Yeah, well, I just wanted to, uh, as we, as we talked about in the last call, he used to be taking a little more of a lead on these county ditches. So we got Joe Lewis, who, since I've started entering in the conversations or weekly meetings, Joe has been, uh, leading those from Houston's side. Um, so I'll introduce him, and then, uh, um, yeah, you can ask him any questions.
We will put him next.
Oh, you will, okay.
Cause that's what's on our agenda, okay? So what we will do is we're gonna discuss the tree clearing on the ditches right now.
Mister Chair, I, I know that, uh, I, I, we don't wanna kick this down the road, but I do believe Mister Pop would be a good one because between Mister Johnson and Mister Pop, a lot of these ditches are in their area, and how, how much is that gonna put the projects back if we waited, uh, till the next meeting on this one?
Yeah, I just know I talked to Luke Hillman from Hillman Construction yesterday. He had it slotted, if you did want him cleared, he was gonna do it the week after next, um. I think he originally talked to Chris about doing it next week if you did want, but since it's deer hunting and we got hunters in the stand, probably not the best time to do clearing. Um, it would push him out, um, I'm not sure what his reaction would be to that, but, uh, I know that's, was his plan to do it, if he, if you did, would be in two weeks.
I do know talking to the landowners when we met out there that they did not want him cut anyway until they got all the crops out of the field. They did mention that. Board, what do you wanna do with this?
I think we can start discussion on it.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, Mister Chair, if we could, may, maybe I, I realize that, uh, we're gonna have Joe doctors on the next item, but I kinda like to have some discussion with him about this right now, if we could.
Okay.
Get his opinion.
Well, we will move number four agenda item into number three here, so go ahead, that'd be fine.
Okay, all right, Joe.
All right, well, thank you, Commissioners. I'm happy to be here. Uh, like Mark said, my name is Joe Lewis, and I've been working with Benton County on these drainage projects not too terribly long. Um, it's been since August when I stepped in for another engineer that was working with you, but, uh, I've, I've worked with half a dozen, maybe a few more drainage authorities across the state. And happy to be, you know, working with you guys too. So when it comes to tree clearing, uh, you know, there is, there is a technical basis for, you know, clearing the trees. From, from the engineer's standpoint, you know, the, the argument comes down to, it's accessing the drainage system for inspection and maintenance. And second, it's, uh, eliminating the risk for, you know, future blockages and issues with the ditch as, as trees fall over, decay, end up in the ditch or parts of them end up in the ditch and, and cause issues either by, um, blocking that flow or redirecting flow into a bank of the ditch and causing some erosion. So I think that's fairly straightforward itself. Um, what I see from a policy standpoint is, uh, it's variable. Drainage authorities take different approaches. Some are very much, you know, we're gonna always clear both sides of the ditch. That full sixteen and a half foot width, that's the buffer width, the vegetated grass buffer strip requirement. And in some cases, you know, that they do a little bit more just for the, to facilitate maintenance when it comes to projects. Others take it on a case-by-case basis. Um, they'll, they'll clear at least one side, uh, and then work with landowners to, to limit unnecessary clearing for, for the maintenance project that's coming up. So, I, I don't know that that's a lot of help, you know, for you guys, that there is the different approaches that drainage authorities take. Um, from my just straight kinda technical opinion, it's, it's best to have both sides cleared. You're, you're going to allow for that good inspection and maintenance work to happen, and you're going to limit the future risk of projects. And it is, it's equitable, you know, you, you're, you're treating both sides the same, uh, but it is, you know, when it comes to the stage we're at with branch six, excuse me, not branch six, with ditch six, you're gonna add some cost to the project. And, and the other factor is that, you know, some landowners really have that desire to, to leave trees, especially if it's, if that's the wooded strip, you know, rather than just the edge of a, of a tree or wooded area. So, that's my, my summary, I guess. If, if you had questions about, um, specific things, happy to answer those and help you talk through it.
So what we've seen when we, uh, actually went out and looked at these ditches is that they did the ditch clearing on one side. But right at the, above the top of the ditch, I mean, the trees were right there. I mean, the, they're gonna fall into that ditch. I mean, they're not four or five feet past that ditch, they are right on the bank of that ditch, and that's our concern. Is that if we're gonna do the ditch, and the concerns of the landowners that if we're gonna do the ditch, we gotta do it right. So that we don't have to keep going back for maintenance, you know, every three years or four years because of these trees falling in the ditch.
Mister Chair, I, I think from my perspective too, I've struggled with this because I, I can see both sides of this discussion. I, I'm still kind of in the camp that we clean both sides at sixteen and a half feet. I realize there's extra cost up front. I'm trying to look a little farther down the road at, I, I believe our maintenance costs will be less if we've got both sides cleared out going down the road, and if we're gonna inspect these ditches on a, a statute probably talks five years. Um, I, I believe our maintenance costs will be a lot less if we can get both of these sides cleaned out. I, I guess my, uh, initial attitude was that we would do that- I, I guess my initial attitude was that we would do that across the board at every ditch, but maybe the consideration is that we take them on a ditch by ditch basis instead of a flat out precedence that we're gonna do it. I'm thinking out loud, I, from what I saw in County Ditch Six, that the farmers weren't allowed, they weren't farming up to it now anyways because the trees were holding them back way more than sixteen and a half feet. So in this case, they can get sixteen and a half feet. I think we gotta make sure our contractors are leveling the spoils off and so that this can get seeded down. And quite frankly, I think most farmers are gonna take care of that, that grass area themselves. And for the people that aren't farming, if they've got acreage there, that I'm sure the farmer will come and probably take care of that too. So I'm leaning more towards getting both sides done and a lot of that comes from what I believe will be less future maintenance costs.
Now, I, I believe what the engineers, uh, helped me out, Mark, the, when we opened the bids, I believe we were way under budget to what the engineers projected. And then adding this additional cost of clearing both sides was still under budget of what the engineer predicted.
Yeah, that is correct. I think our, our low bid there was approximately a hundred thousand below the engineer's estimate. So you got a really good fair price and, uh, we're talking.
Sixty.
Sixty thousand, I think it was, something like that.
For the additional.
In that additional, you know, so at that point in time, it still brings it under, underneath the engineers, uh.
Commissioner Kapinski.
I, I'm lucky. I only got one ditch in our area. Yeah, I don't think you even have any.
Okay. You're right. No, I don't.
You know, uh, so I, as much as I wanna voice my, I, I put it this way. I think what I seen in the ditches on ditch or on, on ditch six with the trees literally in the bank. I, I don't think, I think we're gonna run into issues anytime you're, you're displacing roots and everything like that. It makes a tree weaker. And I think we're gonna have that falling in our ditches. But I also understand that you guys have to deal with a lot of the constituents in your area. And I'm gonna rely heavily on what you and Commissioner Pop say because you guys are hearing from everybody in, in your districts.
And I'll be very honest, I, it, the people I've talked to, it's pretty much a fifty-fifty split, you know, kinda like what Joe talks about. A ditch authorities kinda sound like that's the case too. Ends up becoming a preference for them and again, I, uh, I'm hanging my hat more so on the future maintenance costs that I believe will be less.
Yeah, and then talking.
Think you're right.
And then talking about the ditch in your district, ditch three, you know, that has to be cleared out on both sides because you and I both know and understand what that ditch is like because there's a lot of dead trees in that whole area that will create problems in the future, you know. Commissioner Schlangen?
Um, so are the ones that are removing the trees, are they like recycling or making use of the trees that they're removing?
Uh, Commissioner Schlangen, uh, the, the answer is not in most cases. Um, there is some cases where there's a large, if there's a large amount of trees, a logger will come in and, and utilize that. That down trees for a benefit, but in a lot of cases, it's not a large amount of trees in the big scheme of things and it's piled and eventually burned or chipped and left there in the spoil.
I seen we are chipping them.
Yeah, I believe the landowners said that they were chipping them and uncovering them.
If I recall correctly though, the, the nice pieces of wood, you know, they were set there in a pile and people were coming and taking them for their own, but a lot of it was chipped, yes.
Okay, Commissioners. Joe, you got anything else to add with this?
Uh, no, I think this is not a unique conversation or discussion that I've seen. Um, if there are landowners in support of the tree removal, I think the, the more likely outcome here with other drainage authorities is that they, they do remove both sides if those landowners are mostly on board. And it is for the, the maintenance benefit.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, what do you wanna do with this?
Mr. Chair, I, uh, my only concern again is Commissioner Pop's not here and this is in his district. I, I realize the delay to Hillman Construction and so I'm a little bit torn on, cause I'd really like to see it get done.
I think these ditches have been delayed in over a hundred years.
They have.
You know, and this, and actually if we do table it, that gives the, uh, landowners more opportunity to get the crops out.
Yeah.
Just because they did express that opinion.
Uh, one note for you, of course, is, uh, if the board wanted to, you certainly could have a, a, a special ditch authority meeting at an earlier time than your next county board day. So I just want, that's an option. If you wish to accelerate things, uh, depending upon Commissioner Pop's availability, you could, of course, disconnect the two meetings and have, have it on some other date soon.
Also, the next meeting is gonna be the same week they were planning on starting in the first place, so if they're just on the, ready to go, when they get the go-ahead.
They still need more.
They, they still need more time because, yeah, they could have other jobs ready to go too and they'd fill them. And then if they get behind on that job, that'd be great. But if they don't, they're early, they're looking to get onto this project, that's gonna delay them. And then they're gonna move on to another project and then this'll get delayed again. That's kind of how the nature of that is. Commissioner Johnson.
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna move to, to table this decision until the November fifteenth meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Propose. It'll be tabled to the next meeting, the fifteenth of November. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, with that, there's nothing else on our agenda?
Oh.
Oh, there was the updates, the engineering updates.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see that, but go ahead. Update.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners again. Uh, so this is a generic update across the, the active projects out there that we're supporting the county on, the drainage authority on. So we've already touched on County Ditch Six and Three to some regard. Uh, so County Ditch Six, as you likely know, you know, that open channel excavation has been completed. Spoils have mostly all been leveled. Um, a few, what, what spots where they were as of a week or two ago still letting that material dry out before finishing the grading and leveling. Uh, and then there is some seeding work that needs to be done. Unless they've done it here recently, but, uh, you know, that work will be completed by the spring and I think you should see, you know, some nice, uh, vegetation growing on those disturbed areas, uh, next spring and there's potentially some kinda touch-up work to do in the spring as, as the melt happens. And maybe those wetter areas need to be, be touched up a little bit. So we've yet to see a pay request from the contractor from Hillman Construction, but that's something that should, I would expect be provided shortly. And we would review that pay request and make a recommendation for payment when that comes in. So that's probably the next thing you'll see from Houston Engineering, um, on that. Uh, I will also say, you know, this is, if this being, uh, you know, the first kinda system-wide repair that you've done in some time. You know, it's, it's not uncommon for there to be in the following year or years afterwards, um, some areas that that might require some touch-up. You know, if the bank didn't fully stabilize and is sloughing in a bit. Or, or if maybe there's some drainage, um, from the field to the ditch that, you know, got unintentionally blocked, that path. So, you know, we'll be, we'll be looking for that, uh, uh, either for those isolated spot repairs or for their, their, the areas where drainage needs to be kinda restored in that sense. Question?
Yes, thank you for addressing that. I got, I got two questions on that. So when they have to come back and address certain areas, is that an add-on charge?
Yeah, there is a warranty within the contract that would require some kinda limited, um, correction work, if you will. That would probably, you know, extend into next spring for there's some, if there's some spot repair work. You know, anything that would occur, you know, later into next year or the following year, I think it would be a stretch to, require the contractor to do that underneath the warranty at no additional cost. So it's likely, uh, you know, a- after next spring, it's likely a additional cost for that spot maintenance repair. But for the drainage, if it happens to be blocked, you know, hopefully that's noticed next spring right away. And that would be a, um, something we'd ask the contractor to come back and correct at no additional cost.
And then the next question was, the landowners, uh, said that when we filled the top of the berm, it created some lowlands fairly close to that in their ditch. Did they create a swell then?
Yeah, that was the, within side of the specifications and, you know, we were talking with the contractor about that.
Okay.
And I think they were, they were making an attempt to, to allow that drainage from the field into the ditch as it was happening before.
Okay, I just wanted to, I just wanted to bring that point because they're gonna be bringing that back to us. You know, if, if this created a lowland in their field, they're not gonna be happy and they want that addressed.
Right. Uh, and I, I do think that we were looking for that. It's, it's often, you know, hard to catch all those spots until, until you have some rain. So I think in the spring, you might have a few spots that pop up.
Mr. Chair, um, Joe, do you happen to know off the top of your head what the retainer maybe is on that contract?
Uh, five percent.
Okay.
Is what we, well, and we haven't made a payment.
Right. Right.
It's a hundred percent right now.
And then, and then I don't know that, uh, maybe have the answer for this, but we, we're gonna have to have some discussions going forward about what our maintenance plans are on these ditches and, and I don't know when the appropriate time is for that, but I don't wait real long to have that discussion.
Right. Uh, that's an excellent point. Uh, we typically see, you know, the inspections that you're gonna do anyways as required by statute every three or five years. You know, immediately following the repair, you probably wanna give it a little bit more attention quicker just to anticipate, or anticipating some of those isolated incidents where you might have, um, unstable banks or, or some other drainage issue. Uh, and then of course with, uh, with the tree, tree areas, you wanna be on top of the herbicide spraying. Yeah, that's, you know, a lot of drainage authorities have a policy that they follow every so many years or spot treatments as needed. These areas that were cleared, especially there, you know, there's regrowth, more likely to be regrowth.
Right. Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Kapinski.
I think we talked, I was gonna bring this up one more time, just on the liability issue. If we're pushing all this water to certain areas and we flood people out, whether that's a neighboring county, whether it's a neighboring city, whether it's neighboring property, just because the, all these ditches flow correctly. Do you guys have any liability on that? Or is that all flow, fall back on the drainage authority?
Yeah, I'll say that, you know, when it comes to a repair of a exi- existing drainage system, you know, you're, you're doing, uh, nothing other than restoring the originally constructed capacity. Which doesn't mean there can't be issues if you have a, a drastic difference between the prior to repair state versus the repaired state. There is statutes that talk about, you know, what environmental considerations you need to, you need to consider. But those, those are require, statutory requirements to look at when you're doing a construction of a new system or an improvement of an existing system. And in repairs, those aren't often looked at as closely, cause you don't, you don't need to, right, by statute, but there is typically some consideration given to, to that. So. Yeah.
I don't think we answered.
No, I didn't answer your question. No, I think if, if there's a question of, is there liability? I think there is some, you know, responsibility for the drainage authority to, um, consider those downstream effects, but I don't think that means that you are not gonna do a project or that you shouldn't do the repair.
Mr. Chair, as a follow-up, we did in our highway meeting this morning, we had some co- conversation on this. And I think these ditches, whether we like it or not, have been changed, um, with all the tiling that goes into them. And then obviously the, the culverts that, that get put into them, um, get, you know, larger and stuff. I see both sides of it. I'm just saying that as all this drainage comes through, and I'm no hydraulic specialist, I can tell you that, but I just don't wanna have any issues down the road going, uh-oh, who's at fault?
Yeah, well, I, I don't have a, a great answer to kinda give it to you black and white. And that's something that, you know, we could come back with a more definitive answer and potentially have a, a legal counsel opinion when it comes to that liability and risk.
Mm-hmm.
That'd be good to, good to have. Commissioner Schlangen?
With that, um, would you have a plan to address the situation to make it so it's not so harmful post to refix that?
Uh, sure, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Schlangen, uh, there is, you know, oftentimes with drainage systems and, and major repairs on, on large systems, there is a component that looks at a, a multi-purpose drainage management strategy that would look to, you know, both restore or create drainage that's beneficial for, for drainage purposes, but also to incorporate temporary water storage or other water quality measures. So that's something that I don't believe was considered inside of the, the repair report for County Ditch Six or, or the other drainage systems in the county. Uh, and that is not a statutory requirement to do that. It's more of a voluntary measure that the drainage authority, um, could take on. But, you know, really your, your hat of the drainage authority is to provide that drainage that it, the benefiting landowners have a right to when this is, based on when the system was established. So, you know, the, the board could take that upon themselves to look at other strategies to both restore that drainage and, and offset any potential impact to the hy- hydrologic, um, characteristics of the system.
Mr. Chair, Joe, if I could get back to Commissioner Kapinski's comments about culverts, just for clarification, so in a repair, culverts would be put back that were originally part of their, uh, as constructed?
Yeah.
But then how about the roadways?
Sure.
And is that the exception?
Sure.
When the road, when the ditch is going through a roadway?
Yeah, the most common scenario is when the drainage system was established in nineteen oh, nineteen ten or thereabouts, I don't know the exact, uh, year. The road crossings are typically not part of the drainage system. They either didn't exist or potentially there was a, you know, a small bridge structure over those, over those when they were created or when the roads were put in. And since then, there's been a, a culvert. Those have been, uh, replaced with the culvert or when a new roadway goes in, well, here's a culvert. So those, those culverts are not part of the public drainage system. Okay, so they, they have, just by the nature, they have a smaller capacity than the drainage system, which is the channel. So the culverts have a hindrance, you know, potential hindrance on the capacity of the drainage system. So when we come in and do a repair and we look at the existing capacity of those, uh, culverts, you know, we, we look at what, does it, does it restrict the capacity of the drainage system? Are they sized to the, the normal criteria that's typically used to, to size the capacity of these crossings? So that's some background and I guess I'm, I'm forgetting what the direct question was, but.
Well, just that, um, are, are the road, like you just said, the road system isn't part of the drainage system. So the, the road culverts would be placed according to what the road needs are versus what the drainage need is.
Correct.
Okay. Second follow-up question, sorry, is, um, so we talk about all these repairs. When do we ever get to the spot of talking about improvements? And the reason I say that is because Commissioner Kapinski talked about, you know, farmers are tiling in the ditches, right? We're, we're building way more things than we're here a hundred years ago. And so, uh, we've got a lot more impervious soils around because of that. So when do we start the discussion about improvements to county ditches?
Yeah, so that's a good question. The, an improvement is a totally different, uh, or a separate legal proceeding that's dictated, how that's done, initiated, that's dictated by the Drainage Law, Chapter one three E. And that would require a certain percentage or number of landowners on the system to petition for an improvement. So it's really driven by those, those landowners, not the Drainage Authority Board.
And so it's a number of landowners. It's not just a landowner who would file a petition for repair. It would be a multiple number of landowners to file for an improvement.
Correct. I think the number, the threshold is twenty-five or twenty-six percent of landowners or of the area, of the benefiting area of the system. So it could be, you know, one landowner that owns twenty-six percent of the land with inside of the watershed. Or it could be twenty-six percent of the landowners, I think is how that's worded.
I think what happens a lot of time in the, in the public's eye is that we're, we're, we're looking at a repair petition back to as constructed, not to what we think it should be today because it's a hundred years later.
Correct.
Is that a fair statement?
Y- yes.
Okay.
Good question.
All right, that's all I have. I'll quit drilling them.
Anything else?
I'm good.
With all those questions, Joe, you got any follow-up?
Uh, well, this is a good discussion. It's, you know, I don't know, really nice to be here and hear some of these, these things firsthand. Uh, well, this is a good discussion. It's, you know, I don't know, really nice to be here and hear some of these, these things firsthand and kinda. Understand where you're coming from with these drainage system projects. So, um, as far as should I go on to other?
Keep going.
Other systems. So County Ditch three, that's the other active project, uh, clearing on that one occurred beginning of last week. On one side. And then the channel was excavated and cleaned also last week. I think they finished by the middle of the week last week. Uh, that one did not have any culvert replacements. Uh, so we have yet to. Be out there and verify the depths that were, that were excavated to within the channel, but we'll be doing that here shortly. And, you know, I think the, the ditch, there was more water present, so that material that was excavated is. Probably gonna take some time to dry out. And I don't think they've made a lot of progress with leveling that, of that. So I, I see that extending into next spring.
Mister Chair, if I could, is it appropriate at this point? I mean, you, you talked a little bit ago about County Ditch three doing both sides. I mean, if they're out there working, probably should make a decision on County Ditch three.
Well, that's, that was my question to Joe, is when you're gonna go out there and inspect that, take pictures? Because if we do have trees on the edge of the slope, they gotta be gone. Because that is a low land area all the way through that ditch syst- well.
Pretty much.
Pretty mo- yeah, pretty, pretty much, that whole ditch system is, is of low lands, you know, and the trees around that are, are dying.
So are you saying not prepared to make a decision on both sides of C D three then?
We gotta get a price from them, right?
Yeah, 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 um, I talked to Luke yesterday and he just, he said he didn't put anything together yet. Cause he wasn't sure, but that's who he's kinda wondering if you decided on C D six. Or, uh, to clear both sides, you're gonna wander on that side. He did say that it is wetter on that side.
Yes.
So it probably is gonna be a different unit price change. Um, but he didn't have anything put together. I can ask him. Uh, if you want that by the next ditch authority meeting.
And I would like pictures too of that ditch system, so that we can see if the trees are fairly close to the edge of that ditch. You know, because that makes it a lot easier to termination.
Okay, that's something that we can provide prior to their next meeting.
Mister Chair, is, is there an issue timing wise that they're gonna be done with this project and pull off and we have to remobilize them, come back?
Yeah, I believe that's already the case.
With C D three?
Uh, I believe so. I mean, I'm not a hundred percent sure on that, but probably, it's probably likely, because it's been. They were in and out of there probably within a few days.
Okay.
Yeah, their excavator was gone, I think, as of last Thursday already, so.
So they're already gone, okay.
I think they just had a skid loader out there.
Okay, okay.
Okay. Anything else, Joe?
Uh, next item on C D three, I, I just wanted to acknowledge that, uh, the petition for removal from the benefit. Of C D three, uh, we did receive that petition and Houston is in the process of. Reviewing the technical components of that. And it will be providing, you know, a brief summary of, of the merits of that. Technical argument presented within the petition.
Great, thank you.
Mister Chair, I think, uh, we also needed to get a legal. Review as well, because there was some legal statute cited or, or cases, um, cited in there. So do we gotta get?
Is that, is that what you guys are working on right now too?
Uh, we're going, the, as the engineer, I think we're just, we are gonna stick to the hydrologic analysis that they provided. And there is some. Uh, you know, legal arguments made within there that I don't think the engineer should be providing an opinion on.
And that's fine, that'll be up to Michelle. Go ahead, Joe.
All right, and, and then I'll mention, uh, County Ditch ten, the record reestablishment proceeding was initiated, I think at your last meeting. So that report has now been finalized and delivered to Mark as of Friday. So in the short term here, you will be asked to, probably at your next meeting, to schedule a hearing. Date for that record reestablishment. And then notices will, will go out and. At that time and we'll share a copy of the report with the D N R as required by statute. So that they can provide comments and advisory letter, similar to, you know, the process you just went through with County Ditch nine.
Mister Chair, probably it'd be wise of us and out of common courtesy to. Let the Audit Treasurer's Office know that this, uh, notice is gonna be coming up and needing to be sent out.
Yes.
So they're not surprised.
I agree, and make sure they get sent out. Okay, anything else, Joe?
Uh, on County Ditch nine and fourteen, I'll just mention that there's been fuel work from our wetland specialist. That's occurred, uh, this fall. And we're in the process of incorporating that, that field work. Into repair reports. Um, specifically, we're looking at the types of wetlands present within and adjacent to. Those County Ditch nine and fourteen systems and, and the results, the findings of that wetland. Field work will be incorporated into the, the repair report recommendations and alternatives. So. That is, that is it.
Mister Chair, one quick question. Any other repair petitions that we know of? Nothing on twelve or fifteen, thirteen? Nothing's come in. Okay, thank you.
Great, well, thank you for being here today. Appreciate it.
Thank you, and nice meeting you.
Thanks for assisting us through this whole process. Okay, anything else?